Mayor, Council, and Community, this is one of our regular updates as it relates to the Potomac Yard Entertainment District. We have Stephanie Landrum, who is the President and CEO of AEDP, and our Finance Director, Kendall Taylor, and our Deputy Director of Finance, Kevin Greenleaf. And I think tonight, we're going to talk a little bit more detail about some of the finances, as well as a little bit more about some of the engagement efforts to date. And I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie. I would just say, as you, there'll be a lot of information tonight in terms of numbers. Again, those are projections, and those, you know, have had a lot of serious discussion in the community about the validity of these numbers and projections. And just what we're sharing tonight is what essentially is in the different analysis and studies. And everyone in the community can make their own choices to whether, how strongly they feel in terms of the support of this information. But we feel that the information you're going to have tonight does represent information that's been developed through experts in this field, as well as verified by our financial advisors. So I'll turn it over to Stephanie.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you to Kendall for advancing the slides. We're going to start with just a few updates on what has transpired since we last gave you an update two weeks ago. So at the General Assembly last week, February 22nd, the House of Delegates passed their caboose budget, which includes language that would create the Virginia Sports and Entertainment Authority and Entertainment District in Alexandria. The House budget now goes to conference, and that's where the House and the Senate will resolve differences between their two versions of their budgets. So that's where discussion about this Entertainment District and Monumental Headquarters relocation will continue through the end of their session, which is scheduled to end on March 9th. We're going to make this PowerPoint available online, and so we kept on this slide previous bills that also considered the creation of the authority, one in the House and one in the Senate, but the one that continues and will be debated at the General Assembly level is the House Budget Bill. Since we last met, we have released more information about the Economic and Fiscal Impact Analysis that serves as the foundation for our evaluation of this opportunity. So as a quick reminder, we put up a summary of the analysis very shortly after we announced the Monumental Opportunity in December. And then we did a explanation video from our financial advisors, Davenport, and I'll have some information about how often that's been viewed coming up, as well as our Finance Director, Kendall Taylor. We did a listening session in January, and we heard very early on that the community and many stakeholders wanted more information. And as Council knows, these analyses that we do on a relatively regular basis, we've never released a full version because they are full of proprietary information. But we worked over January and into February to figure out how we could release more. And so we published the complete report with as limited redactions as possible on February 16th. We reached out to a variety of members of the press and did briefings, and we've gotten a lot of coverage and more questions as a result. But that information has now been available to the public since the 16th. Also, since we met, George Mason University, the Schar Center for Regional Analysis, I think that's the official name, Schar School of Policy and Government, George Mason University, they released a technical review of the HRNA report. There's a 12-page executive summary that is available, and the Director of the Center published an op-ed in the Richmond Times. So those are also now available for public review. Additionally, since we last met on the next slide, we have put together more information about the jobs creation. That has been a number, a big number, that was part of the initial announcement, 30,000 jobs, and there's been lots of conversation and questions about what those jobs would entail, what is the difference between direct and direct and induced, and how those jobs would come online throughout the phase development. And so we have created more information, and that is now available to the public as well. And I'll say it multiple times, but all of the information that we're talking about is and has been available on MonumentalALX.com. Next, there was also, I think, right as we were meeting last time, JBG Smith announced their intention to commit to the preservation of 500 units of affordable workforce housing in Alexandria. And so we have spent some time sharing more information about how that might work. We did a listening session where we talked about this and used an example of the Parkstone in Alexandria as the type of project that we might be able to work collaboratively with JBG Smith on. Since then, our leaders in housing have continued to have discussions to help to identify potential projects should we move forward. And we're continuing to talk to the state and Virginia Housing and the Governor's Administration to see if there might be any additional resources available to help with preservation. The intent of these funds would be to be used between when we decide that we're going to move forward with this project and its delivery, to preserve units that might become compromised or might be targets for acquisition and rent increases in the time between when we would be able to deliver a project and start building new residential as well. Mr. Manager mentioned engagement, so we wanted to give you some numbers here of how, of what we've been doing since December 13th. So in these blue, I'm bad at geometry, slanted squares, I know there's a name for that. I've identified with our team how many things we've been communicating, so in newsletters, in website views, in engagement videos, and YouTube videos. And so you can see the numbers here. The newsletter is sent through the MonumentalALX.com website. We've had 12 sent out. We have grown to over 1,400 subscribers who are receiving sort of new information and information about engagement. Our website views are over 64,000. We have posted videos of every listening session, every public meeting, and a couple of tutorials or slash info videos. So the financial background, we had Davenport and Kendall Taylor on, there have been over 600 views of that video alone. And then at the bottom here, you see the actual meetings that we have conducted. So City Council did your Town Hall in person. We've done four listening sessions, one community conversation, which is, was virtual, but allowed participants to vocally ask questions. We're in the middle of doing a pop-up series. We've done two in-person, two more scheduled. We've been doing updates like this at every City Council Legislative Meeting, so tonight is number four of the year. And so far, we have met with 40 civic or business associations with dozens more scheduled. Almost every night, certainly lots during the days as well. And I just want to acknowledge that the manager put together a team that's been working on this, Ebony Fleming, Catherine Caraway, Dana Weddles, Liz Bolton on my team, Coco McLean, and then the transportation team has also been doing some of the heavy lifting as of late with the Director, Adriana Costaneda, Ryan Knight, and Hillary Orr. So next up is just also a couple more numbers for you. At all of these events and through an online forum, we have collected more than 848, I'm sure, because I'm sure some have come in while I'm talking, total questions or comments. You can see the various ways these are coming through. We wanted to make sure that the public knows that the responses to these are iterative. We are answering them as quickly as we can. They are oftentimes complicated and require, you know, just a few, a handful of us to be able to address them, but they are being updated as they become available on the MonumentalALX.com website. And so that's a, this is a picture of what that looks like, so people can go up and sort by category and find their question and answer or resource. And so the last thing I wanted to give an update on before I turn it over to Kendall is that we did hold last week a transportation and transit community conversation. This was put together by us here locally, but featured the state partners who conducted the analysis and the preliminary set of recommendations. But our team, led by our Transportation Director, also, you know, began to answer questions. This is the first in what we know is going to be a series of conversations and sessions where we figure out what improvements and enhancements need to be done. As a next step, we know that the focus here at the local level, the thing, the part that we very much can control and do well is the neighborhood protection. And so we are setting up a meeting with the Presidents of the Civic Associations who sit immediately around the site to do a sort of a workshop session with them on neighborhood protection, so that we can start to talk more about what specific tactics and tools we need to put in place in the neighborhoods that would be immediately impacted around this project. So that is a next step that we're taking locally. We're now working with the state to schedule the next conversation for the community around the larger set of transportation and transit improvements that would need to move forward if this project proceeds. The video of the session from last week is also available on the website. And with that, I will hand it over to Kendall Taylor, who's going to walk through this, sorry, this last slide is just our upcoming engagement opportunities next week, two additional pop-ups. And so now I'll hand it to Kendall, who's going to walk through, this was something Council had suggested early on that we talked through, kind of the impacts of some of these large numbers that we've been discussing.
Good evening. I'm Kendall Taylor. I'm the Director of Finance, and with me is Kevin Greenleaf, the Head of the Revenue Division and a Deputy Director, the Deputy Director of the Finance Department. And when I was here about a month ago, you asked me to try to put these numbers into context. We're talking about billions and billions of dollars, and it is difficult for any of us to really relate to those magnitude of numbers. And so we're going to kind of walk through the phases and then really get it down to what does it mean to a homeowner, a residential taxpayer? And so what you have here on this slide takes the first year, that year, calendar year 30, where in the arena and Phase One are built out, and there's pledged revenues that have come in, generated from the site. They're not here now. Nobody is generating these revenues, but parking revenues and admission taxes. So the share that's attributed to us is $58.9 million, and then some of that goes to share in the authority, the sports authority, to pay the debt for those bonds that are being issued. So after both of those are accounted for, there is net revenue from the pledged revenue, some people call it the waterfall, of $25.3 million. There's also 8.4 million of non-pledged revenue. So we know that a great example is somebody's going to come to Alexandria to attend a hockey game, they might have dinner in Old Town. That is outside of this, the boundary that we're talking about. We also have revenue that is restricted for purposes already, our stormwater fee. So there are revenues in this area that will not go toward this, and that is part of the revenue that this will generate. So total new revenue, when you account for both sides of that, of arena and Phase One is $33.7 million. Now, we know that there will be costs that we are going to want to address when this is happening. There might be more trash pickup in the parks that we want to do, there might be traffic calming initiatives, public safety. And so that's also accounted for. The estimate is $25.3 million. Of that $33.7 could be utilized to help address needs that we as a city and as a community find necessary. So after both of those are accounted for, we're at $8.4 million. And so that, the $33.7 in the first year, is designed to allow that the city ensures a safe and enjoyable experience regardless of whether you are coming to the city to attend an event, or you live around the area, or you're anywhere else in the city. And so the costs associated with servicing that district are fully covered, but there are also millions of dollars available for new programs and services in Year One, and that's expected to grow each year. And so the next slide takes a look at the incremental growth, basically from calendar year 30. This is just the arena and Phase One. We're not talking about the build-out in Phases Two or Three. But you can see, in each of those years, we are growing both the funds available to address the needs that might be generated from doing this, but also generating new revenue for city programs and services. So in the beginning, we're looking at $33.7 million, and by the end of that, that Phase One and the arena, by the time we're at 2036, we've got new revenue of $40.9 million. So I want to take us then to, and we're talking about Phase Two and Three, we've been talking about this all along, as a catalytic project. This is going to spur development around this area, mixed use. We're going to have more, there's going to be residential, there will be hotels, there will be all kinds of different mixed-use properties around this area. And so we recognize that that is going to generate additional fiscal impact needs. So what this chart is showing you is the pledged revenue at this point is 68.7. We still have our share of the debt that the authority will have. And now we're at net revenue with Phase One and the arena of 32.6. But now all the non-pledged revenue, Phase Two and Phase Three are not pledged to any of this. So all of that revenue becomes available to support the city, to both support the fiscal impacts. When you add, when you develop an area, you're going to add residents, you will eventually need a school, you might want to park, you're going to have infrastructure needs. So all of that is also identified as something we know is going to potentially be necessary, talking about 13 years from now. But even after those are taken into account, we're at $47.3 million of new revenue for programs and services. So I wanted to try to put into context, because we're still talking about numbers that don't necessarily resonate, I mean, my bank account doesn't have 33.7, so that does not resonate with me. But when you start to talk about, what does 33.7 mean? Tonight is a special night. It's the budget. We will talk about real estate taxes and the tax rate, and what a penny on the tax rate means. So 33.7, our real estate tax rate, each penny generates about $4.7 million. The 33.7 million of new money is the equivalent of seven cents on our real estate tax rate, which if you multiply that against the average house, which is 699,000, now you're talking about $490 on a residential tax bill. Other ways for us to generate 33.7 million, we'd have to double the meal sales tax revenue. So all of what we generate from our meals tax revenue over every restaurant, every food and beverage sold in the city, that would have to double. We would have to triple what we're getting from our hotel taxes if none of this is happening. This is how this kind of money can be generated. How could we use 33.7 million? You could leverage that and borrow, using the debt service, the 33.7 could pay debt service and generate $370 million. I don't know if that number is familiar to any of you. I was amazed at the number. First of all, it's the equivalent of the 10-year CIP for our school system. It's also what we paid to build the Potomac Yard Metro Station. That was the construction cost. So we are coming full circle back around. I'm amused by that. So the 115.4, that is our net new revenue when we're in 2037. So remember, every $10 million of debt service, you can generate $115 million of bond proceeds. So when we're talking about $115 million, I am not telling you to go borrow billions and billions of dollars, but I want to put into perspective what this kind of money can generate in terms of bond proceeds. When you get to 115, that is the equivalent of nearly a quarter of our real estate tax bill now, $1.11. This is, this generates 20, 24 cents generates $115 million. So that equates to $1,680 on the average tax bill. And I want to put that into some perspective. This is, it's an offset. We are not saying that this would reduce a tax bill. We're not saying we're going to spend it on something else, but it now puts more revenue in your toolbox of what you can do to invest in programs and services, or to not raise taxes in the future. And so this chart just gives you a sense of what the FY24, this is from the budget document, what the tax and fee burden is for the average household. So they're now paying, on average, real estate taxes of $7,500, personal property taxes just over 600. So as you work down, the arena and Phase One, that 490 compares to these burdens that we have right now. The total project, as you compare, it provides us another source of revenue besides our real estate tax rate or any of these other taxes and fees. So this is something that I think is important to keep in mind. We have a shopping center, and it actually generates almost $6 million a year. That is real estate taxes, that is sales taxes, business, personal property taxes. And if we assume that we have that shopping center and it grows by 2.5%, by 2030, we've got $7 million, or by 2037, we're looking at $8.3 million. If we pursue arena and Phase One, we're looking at, in 2030, $33.7 million of new revenue to the city. An arena Phase One, Two, and Three, 2037, $115 million. So that compares to what we have now versus what we are expecting to achieve with this initiative from a commercial tax, commercial tax-based investment. So I'm going to close with this chart. You see this chart, you saw it when I was up here a couple weeks ago. Jim will have this chart for you also. We have been talking about this chart for, I've been here almost 30 years, and I feel like we've been talking about it for 29 of those years. We were 20, almost 20 years ago, we were at just under 70% of our tax base was residence and residential properties when you count multifamily. Now in 2024, we're over 82%. If we don't do something different, this is the trajectory that we have. We are increasing our residential tax base and our commercial tax base is declining. So when we talk about doing something from a catalytic perspective and changing our tax base to have more commercial taxes, more visitors, more outsiders paying for revenues that we can use for our programs and services to relieve the pressure that we have on the people that live in our homes and live in our apartments, this is what we're talking about, is changing the trajectory of this chart. Yep, it's jammed. I'm happy to take any questions now.
Questions for Ms. Taylor, Ms. Landrum, Councilman Aguirre, Councilwoman Gaskins?
First off, Ms. Taylor, thank you so much. This is kind of exactly what I was looking for, in terms of, you know, trying to put things in a way that folks can grasp a little bit more and, you know, see why this council is, you know, taking this into consideration. I guess, you know, some folks will say, well, these are rosy projections. Can you, can you give us a little bit more insight of how you were kind of measuring this in terms of baselines? Like if, this is our best scenario projections and worst scenario projections, where did you kind of?
So our studies that we've been, and Stephanie can chime in on here, we, we took a, I mean, it doesn't benefit any of us to overstate what we think is going to happen, because the rating agencies, our investors, that whole group is going to kind of poke holes at that right out of the gate. We would also state that we did a lot of sensitivity testing. What if this doesn't happen? What if this one doesn't materialize at all? How do all of those play a part? So from the, I don't have the kind of percentage adjustments we made, but I will say that we, there was sensitivity testing to say, all right, let's, let's look at kind of worst-case scenarios.
Yeah, that's great to hear, and I, you know, it's just that little bit of insight that really is helpful, because again, a lot of times, that's going to be the first kind of hole people want to poke into some of these numbers that we're looking at. So I just want to reiterate that, you know, the city has a AAA, AAA bond rating for a reason. We look at the numbers very carefully. We have our experts that are looking at it. We get assistance from outside folks to double, triple, quadruple-check our numbers. And so this is very helpful to have. Thank you.
If I could add to that, when we were starting to talk about this, there were guiding principles. One of them was, you will not jeopardize the AAA bond rating, and we will not utilize existing taxes, existing revenue, existing general fund, similar to the approach we took with the metro station where we said, how can we do this with the revenue that would be generated, not diverting funds from existing programs and services?
Thank you, Councilman Aguirre, Councilwoman Gaskins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you both for the presentation. The first is just a comment, I think, because I assume this is going to go on the website, and it would just be helpful at the beginning if you could list the sources that you used for the data, because I think, you know, I think the study's in a different place, but if it's all helpful to have it all in one, then people can have the source of where the information is coming from. I had a couple clarifying questions. One, it was helpful to hear your response to Councilmember Aguirre about the worst-case scenarios. It looked to me that the projections on Phase Two and Three are based on a full build-out of Phase Two and Three. Is it possible to see kind of some examples of what happens if we don't reach the full build-out in either of those, and what that means for the financial projections? The other question I had, and I think I just missed something, but it was a few slides back, you said, Phase Two and Three revenue is not pledged to any of this, but I didn't catch the "this." Can you just talk a little more?
Sure. So it's the arena and Phase One that are, the revenue generated by that that is pledged to pay the various bonds that are being utilized to finance this entire project. Phase Two and Three have no relationship to that.
So 100% of all taxes revenue coming from Phase Two and Three come directly to the city?
Thank you. The other question, let me just make sure I get the note. The other question I had, the money that you talked about would set aside for traffic calming, public safety, capital expenses, are we envisioning that that kind of goes into like a special pot that is for the PY Entertainment District? Or is that, that goes into the general fund, and as projects are identified, that's money we can pull from?
So right now, I wouldn't want you to use the term "set aside." It is presumed, and so it's, it's not, an assumption has been made that there will be costs. And so that, all of that will be part of a normal deliberation of what investments does this community, what does this council want to spend? And so the same way you, revenue is generated and you spend it for traffic calming initiatives or park maintenance or anything like that, that revenue is beyond what is pledged, so it will be available for Alexandria to use for what it needs to make this successful for everybody.
Is there anywhere, either in this presentation or in other documents, where I can find kind of example of some of those considerations? Because I know here, it mentions schools and parks, but in your presentation, I was glad to see it mention public safety. I think there are other things we talked about. It'd just be helpful if there's a running list of maybe some of those different considerations. And then the other question I had, Ms. Landrum, this was for you, related to community engagement. I know a couple times I've mentioned, I'm really grateful for the different sessions we've had, but I wanted to see an interactive session, whether that's a work session or a roundtable, I don't know what the right word is, but I wanted to know any updates on getting something like that scheduled, which is really more of a back-and-forth dialogue with the community?
Sure. Thank you. And you also give me the opportunity to say that all of the sessions that we have done virtually or hybrid, we have allowed for interpretive interpretation. So I would, I would, I mentioned that we're scheduling the session with the Presidents of the Civic Associations to discuss neighborhood protections. That's very much intended to be a work session. A number of the 40-plus community engagements that we have gone and done a lot in person, I would characterize those more as discussions as well and more back and forth. But we are, and then I think also the pop-ups, my colleagues could, could share more with how those have been going as well, but those are literal back-and-forth conversations, questions, ideas. We are open to scheduling more in a different format, but the engagement and the back-and-forth that you're talking about has been taking place in the individual civic and business organization meetings and in the pop-ups to date.
And I think, Stephanie, correct me if I'm wrong, we've also done some small business roundtable discussions?
Yes.
No, I appreciate that. I do, and maybe I just need to think through what it could look like. I still think there is value to add a session that allows folks to come from all across our community. I mean, I know in the civic meetings and the ones that are hyper-localized, you do get that back and forth, but I wonder if we can put our heads together to think of some creative way. I'm almost thinking like in Charles Houston, there's some tables around, maybe there's some ideas we can pull from zoning for housing, or even some of the work that's been going on with Alex West. I just think it would be a missed opportunity to not think about how that could fit in. The other thing along those lines, I know when we had our first one of these updates, Councilmember Bagley mentioned the idea of doing an engagement specifically with youth and maybe something at the high school. I was wondering if there's any update. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, is it my list of things to follow up on? I didn't read this till your thunder, but just wanted to see if that was scheduled and when we might expect that.
Yeah, I've, I've had that discussion with the superintendent, and I think our original thought was maybe we would do it around lunchtime. She was strongly suggesting a different format, and I think that's looking to be scheduled. So I think the intent would be for us to go to the school in a different environment than lunchtime and be able to just have that conversation. It hasn't, there's not a specific date on that yet, but that conversation's taken place. And she's kind of working with me on what can fit our schedules.
Thank you. No, I'd love updates on when either of those two types of activities could get scheduled. And then the last one. And then the last one, I don't need to answer right now, but I've received a couple emails just related to sports betting and a number of concerns about the potential dangers and impacts to quality of life in our community, questions related to what is Monumental's intent, but also some questions related to Virginia law. And so just was wondering if you could, maybe in the next update or even in the questions on the website, give us some concrete information in those three, three areas.
Sure, absolutely. I actually believe we have answered a relatively similar question online, but I will be sure to, to elevate that and, and include that in our next update.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilwoman Pike.
Thank you. I appreciate the very detailed analysis. And for folks who are interested in more information about this, I do strongly suggest you go to the website and read the lightly-redacted documents that were published last week because they're very, I think, illuminating. When we're looking at the second line here, arena authority support Alexandria shared, that's not just bond payments, correct? That's also funding for improvements and, like, the, the funds that we're being putting in for improvements and, and maintenance of the facility so we don't end up in the situation that Capital One is in, as well as creating a reserve for if there's an underperformance year to provide a cushion, correct?
Correct.
So that's important.
Can I just comment on that? So if, if you recall, I think in one of our last sessions, there is a capital reserve that's twelve million and then that, on an annual basis, and it grows. And in addition, that support also includes over a hundred million dollars of infrastructure improvement, water, sewer, stormwater, drainage, all those types of things, so that the entire Potomac Yard is starting to grow. And as it grows, the infrastructure grows with it. So in, in those numbers are a capital reserve to maintain on an annual basis the ability to keep the facilities fresh and updated, particularly on technology. And then it also includes a section on, I think it's a hundred and eight million dollars of infrastructure funding.
Excellent. And then I know we don't have Stephanie Taylor here tonight, but.
Sarah Taylor.
Sarah Taylor, gosh, I'm sorry. We have Stephanie Landrum, not Sarah Taylor. I apologize. Merge them into one person, that'd be way too much work for one human being to handle. But regarding the legislative status in Richmond, obviously, nothing happens here unless arena authority legislation is passed in Richmond. And as you said at your, at the beginning of your statement, language regarding that has been put in the House budget document, is not in the Senate budget document. Do we know how likely the legislature is to come to a budget conclusion in a timely manner this year as opposed to last year where it dragged into the summer?
I certainly am not an expert in this category, but, but what we have been told and as we are talking to our representatives in Richmond, the goal of the Senate and the House is to confer, collaborate, and, and to take the various bills, to include the budget bills, together and come, come back with a, you know, consensus version. And so we are operating under the, I guess maybe I should say expectation that they will do that before March ninth. But we will, you know, we continue to follow and track progress. And as you mentioned, Sarah Taylor is our legislative director and keeps us updated on a daily basis as anything proceeds.
Thank you. And I know that Ms. Taylor and you and hopefully our delegation in Richmond are reminding the House members and Senate members in Richmond that the city has significant concerns about the makeup of the arena authority board, and we're hoping to see significant changes there if this is to be something that can be viably considered locally. And when we see a final product come out of the General Assembly, I hope that we will have a town hall with the full council to discuss that proposal and, you know, have a discussion about this. It's more informed than the one that we had last time because we've had this information from the traffic study come out, we've had these more detailed numbers from the financial study come out, but we'll also know what we're talking about because the General Assembly will have come to something or not by that point. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman Pike. Councilwoman Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson, and to my colleague who brought up my, my ACHS question. No, I appreciate that. On the flip side of the, the youth question, I wanted to sort of throw out as an additional engagement opportunity. I had a really good conversation with At Home Alexandria, attended by several senior, you know, the senior community. And I, I, you know, whether we're doing engagement at senior centers or with senior services as well to sort of recognizing that people's ability to participate potentially in civic associations or, or, you know, the pop-ups. I'm sorry, I'm not sure where to look for Stephanie. But so I just wanted to add that on the flip side, that I think it's important to engage with youth, but we have a, you know, an aging population, a lot of people who have been here a long time and who want to feel a part of the process as well. So if we can tap into those groups like At Home Alexandria, senior services, yeah, paratransit, you know, anybody who could tell us, you know, the best way to reach seniors, I, I think we want to make sure that's a group we don't leave out of the conversation. And then to shift to Ms. Taylor here, yeah, there's too many, like, everybody has, you know, a name that's sort of a version of someone else's. Okay. So on this slide, what I appreciate about what you've done here tonight is you've taken some figures we've actually talked about before, but sort of changed the way they look, you know, changed the way they're being presented. And so what I was hoping you might be able to talk about with this slide is the concept of debt service coverage, because we've shown that chart that shows sort of, you know, 2.0 debt service coverage, but does this chart also in a way speak to, you know, the, the way we are expecting to be able to cover our debt service conservatively?
So what I tried to do with this slide was focus locally, and I think what's important to keep in mind is this, the debt service coverage is the, the authority. And so all the money going into the authority. But to your point, what we have done, as we talk about worst-case scenarios and sensitivity, the coverage is two times. And so the revenue going into, from the pledged revenues, the pledged revenues compared to what we need to pay our debt is twice what is expected. And so put another way, we could be off by half and be covering our debt.
I appreciate it. Oh, sorry.
If I could add, one of that sensitivity analysis that was done by our financial advisors and Stephanie and Kendall, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a lot of revenues coming in and, and projections, and there, there certainly is some margin of concern in some of those that have been expressed. The coverage, if the, the basketball team and the hockey team play and do not have an extended, I'm talking years-long period of delay, that coverage is over 1.3 times. So it covers all debt. The only, the, the risk comes when nothing is happening. So these, these other revenues that may be less certain than teams playing in an arena, if, if none of that happened and the two teams are playing year after year, the coverage, I think, is over 1.3, give or take. So it covers the debt plus net revenue. And we set, by the way, we set that, again, to emphasize what Kendall said in one of the beginning, was the principles that we started with, and we've not deviated from those. No, no risk to our bond rating and making sure that we are not tapping into existing taxes that we are using and need to use for other services. You're going to hear that in the budget tonight. So, so whether it's this project or another project, commercial growth is going to be important. And I think this just emphasized, but on the coverage, I wanted to articulate that a little bit because, again, that was one of the sensitivity analysis that we talked about, which is, which represents risk. I mean, there's, there is, this is not, economic development is not risk-free.
No, I appreciate that. And I, I guess perhaps this wasn't the perfect slide to do it, but I was trying to, I guess, draw attention to if, you know, to Councilman Aguirre's point, if we've miscalculated a little bit, if, if we underperform in some way, there's a significant delta between, you know, sixty-eight, seven hundred, and thirty-six, one hundred. And, you know, in the same way that the debt service coverage on the, the project as a whole, also here in terms of Alexandria's obligations, you know, we've got a significant coverage in there for these calculations. And, and for the layperson who isn't doing the sensitivity testing, you know, that, that's the comfort, you know, that's the padding we've sort of built in, in terms of protecting our own bond rating, protecting our own finances. I mean, that's the comfort that I see in, in the gap in those figures. And then if you could, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I think one, so one of the other things we looked at was making sure that it didn't take a decade for us to start to see revenues or twenty years, that this needed to be generating revenue for us to, to invest in our community again as soon as possible from the beginning. And this chart shows that we are net positive from the beginning. It's not a, you know, out of the gate, you're a little, but then you've got, you know, after your capitalized interest ends, you're in a hole. And so that's also, there is, we're, we are positive from the beginning.
And that actually leads into what would be my last question, which is the, can you find the chart that showed current revenue of the, the strip mall and the anticipated next, you know, two data points? And so, so again, to that end, you know, we know what the current strip mall generates. We can use what it has generated, you know, over the time it's been there to, you know, fairly reliably project out. And so to that point, even at phase one, you know, we see significant over the existing, you know, concept. And so I guess it's not so much a question, but, you know, this is a chart that I really appreciated because I think for the community, there is an investment in the current strip mall and the amenities it provides. But as that gap widens, you know, between seven and thirty-three and eight and forty-two, what that means in teacher pay and, you know, building structures and investments is significant. And so we are evaluating against the current known reality, you know, five point nine million at present versus, you know, these other potentials with these sensitivities, you know, built in, these projections build in those sensitivities and recognizing we know what the current reality is. And so I really appreciate this chart, you know, I'm glad it will be online because I do think there's value in what's there, and nobody's suggesting there isn't value in having a Target and a Best Buy and, you know, Total Wine and such, but is that the, the limited value best for our community all the way out to twenty thirty-seven? Or, you know, are there, then that's really what I think we are wrestling with here and trying to evaluate. So I found this slide helpful and wanted to just draw attention to it. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bagley. Vice Mayor Jackson and Councilman Aguirre.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions, and they may be more directed to Stephanie Landrum because Sarah Taylor's not here. When we're playing, you know, we're still doing the, the what-if game, and I, I appreciate all the numbers. My concern, and Ms. Landrum, hopefully you can help me with this, if not, I'll have to wait for, for Sarah Taylor. When we are looking at the creation of the entertainment and, and sports authority, because that was part of the House budget and then crossing over to the Senate, when, when or if this is created but has no resources that go with it, if the budget doesn't include it, but just includes the creation, do we have an idea of what that will look like going forward with just an entity but nothing to back it up?
So the legislation that was proposed and then was substituted and will be discussed, I guess, over coming, the coming weeks, creates an authority and gives it permission to, to finance these, the arena and the related facilities. And so it gives, the legislation itself gives, you know, creates the authority and assigns it a mission and details who will serve on the authority and how it will move forward to issue bonds and, and oversee the financing and construction. So it, it does not give it money, but it gives it the authority to go and issue debt. So there is a period of time when the authority would be stood up that, that it, it might need some, some revenues to bring on staff. The substitute bill that was penned by the House Committee actually did define a revenue source at the state level for that, but that'll be one of the details, I think, that's discussed in the conference.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Aguirre, then Councilman Chapman.
I was actually going to build off of some of what Councilmember Bagley was talking about because I really appreciated the question from Councilwoman Gaskins, you know, which was basically asking, you know, what happens if phase two and three don't happen? And this partially starts to get at it, but, you know, it isn't the full story. But, you know, essentially, if we don't have phases two and three, we don't have that hundred and fifteen, but we still get that forty-two. And say, you know, if something terrible happens and it's even twenty and we don't forecast properly, I mean, twenty is still double, essentially, a little bit more than double, two times eight is sixteen, just for any of the math nerds out there. But, you know, it's still a little bit more than double what we would be looking at with what we currently have. So just another piece of this story to, to kind of tell and, and look at. But of course, you know, there's, this is a complicated thing. This entire council still has a variety of concerns around other issues, but I'm really happy that we're getting more of this financial stuff out here because this is, you know, one, if, if you look at it, there's four or five issues that we've gotten the most concerns and questions around, and this is definitely one of them, so this is very helpful.
Thank you, Councilman Aguirre. Councilman Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things for me. One, for going off of my colleagues, Councilmember Bagley's thought process here with kind of where we're shaping up with potential, what we have at the site or what we have in and around the site in terms of revenues and where that may go on this particular slide. I think it might be useful because of, you know, we see comments around, you know, what else, if, you know, this arena doesn't go there, what else could go there, what that would look like, and, you know, thoughts about what that is. I think it'd be helpful for people to see kind of what we think those average revenues would be, you know, if it was a townhouse development went there or a mixed-use property or even though we know it's not necessarily possible or might not be possible, like a, a commercial office building. You know, what does that, what does that bring in in terms of, you know, city revenue and what that trajectory will look like if something else was there? And line that up with what we have in this particular, particular opportunity, I think that would be neat to see and be able to educate folks on kind of what these types of buildings and properties bring in across the city, frankly. Excuse me. And to Councilmember Gaskin's kind of conversation about the next phases, I think one of the things that I know I've, I've mentioned actually to the mayor, but will, will probably mention to my colleagues at a better time, is, you know, us talking about as a city, you know, our future of economics, you know, sustainability. Ms. Landrum knows that one of my things that I've loved to talk about is reconvening kind of that conversation that we've had as community. And I do think it would help us, in this particular instance, kind of set ourselves up for phases two and three. I think that's one of my concerns. How do we set ourselves up to make sure that pops and that works? And so having some bigger economic conversation, whether it's, you know, Potomac Yard-specific or kind of a greater city conversation, I think, is probably necessary at some time in the very near future so that we can kind of take advantage of the full opportunity here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Chapman. Councilwoman Gaskins, Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I just had one last question. Ms. Landrum, when you were talking about kind of just the other things moving related to the legislation in the General Assembly, I was wondering if you had any updates on where the conversations stand with funding for WAMADA, given how much, you know, Metro matters to this deal and whether or not it moves forward?
Sure. As I understand it, the funding of Metro is one of the items that is not aligned in the House budget versus the Senate budget. So that is a topic that they will have to confer on as they go into the, the conferies start to meet. So as I understand it, it was not included in the Senate budget, but it was included in the House budget. And so that is one of, you know, probably hundreds of items that the Senate and, and House representatives will meet and, and discuss.
Councilman Aguirre wants to jump in.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add on. Yeah, I just wanted to add on as, as a, with, with Councilmember Bagley's blessing.
Here we go.
Just, just a quick thing on WAMADA. The, the one good thing that is added in there right now currently is a, a pause on the 3% cap, and so that's going to be really good for a readjustment. But still, of course, need to, the House put in two years of funding, which is great, does, you know, step in the right direction, but hopefully that'll get reconciled.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. And so I, I appreciate the request that Councilman Chapman's made for sort of like, okay, we've, we're comparing current versus arena, is there a, a third category that could be other types of development? But the thing that I think needs to be said and maybe expressed, I, I don't envy this task that I'm about to describe, but other types of development, like townhomes, creates students, creates people who want to be in our summer youth programs, creates people who use our parks, who, you know, drive on our streets every day because they live here. So I don't know exactly how, you know, so I guess what I'm getting at is, eloquently, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison necessarily, you know? An arena generates a certain kind of revenue without certain costs. These charts have factored in the costs generated, you know, police and traffic and those sorts of things. But these alternative ideas, like why don't we just build more housing, you know, why don't we, you know, build offices, those have costs as well. That would be the little pair, you know, the little perens underneath. And so it's not that I'm disagreeing at all with, with my colleague's point, but I think it's important for the community to be conscious that like the arena generates no students, you know, Monumental's headquarters generates no, you know, no, no students. The practice facility, you know, does not generate people who are going to be looking for summer youth employment, you know, spaces or for childcare in the city potentially. And so there are alternatives, and they might have their own, you know, net revenue, but they will also have, you know, requirements to be made of the city. And I don't envy you how you will reflect that, but if we do this again, you know, I, I would like an analysis that doesn't ignore that reality.
The good news is, well, one, for your task, I will be collaborating with my friend in planning and designing, Mr. Moritz, but also we have a, an assumed kind of cost of services. We have a multiplier, so when we're bringing on a hotel, we have an assumption that we make when we're bringing on a multifamily. So we have a kind of an accepted and assumed rate of return. Everything we build generates some revenue. Some generates more revenue, more net revenue than others. And so we're going to use that, the same published accepted data set that we've used in the past. In your budget, all of the, whether it's the Potomac Yard Fund Code Fund, they all contribute back to the general fund. You have an inter-fund transfer to pay for their cost of services. And so that's actually a, it's one of the easiest tasks you've given me tonight, is that one compared to some of these other ones, but that, that we'll use that same methodology.
I'll remember that.
And Kendall, Kendall, could I just add in? I just want to sort of point out, HRNA, the, the Economic and Fiscal Impact Model, we all probably know this, this language now because it's, it's gotten so much daylight. They use something called IMPLAN, which takes all of these very minutia costs, and, and the sources of them come from us as, as a city. What does it cost us to provide services? And it also then takes other regional costs, et cetera, to come up with the fiscal impact of each of these uses. And so if we wanted to do a scenario for a different type of development in Potomac Yard, we could work with HRNA to, to do that for us. I do also want to say though, and, and I know this is obvious, one, that piece of property is entitled for a certain type of use, and it frankly, I don't know this for sure, but I'm pretty, pretty confident that the use is not townhouse. It's for, you know, it's for higher-density residential. And so to, to build out a use like that would require some sort of action by city council and a diversion from kind of the vision of the small area plan. But the second piece, and maybe more important, is that it requires a willing property owner. And I think while we still have this slide up, these revenues are real revenues for us, but there is existing revenue that comes to the property owner with, with pretty limited investment required on their part. So it's a pretty high return, which is why there hasn't been other alternative development scenarios presented for the past four years. It really took a project like this that is such a catalyst, that has such an opportunity to, to create the demand for the rest of the development, to basically shake loose the site from the existing property owner who gets a very healthy return from a low-impact retail strip center. And so I just wanted to, to mention that. The same, the same fact is something that we are taking into consideration when we think about the viability of phases two and three. This property owner is going to tear down a revenue generator, you know, a strip center that has multiple high-credit-worthy retailers paying them rent. And if they are going to tear that down, they are incentivized then to start making money off of it with the new use. And so that is part of, you know, kind of the calculus that, that they are running as, as we are evaluating this opportunity. Building the catalyst then allows for the teardown of this shopping center, and then the property owner is, is nothing but incentivized to start to build and make money off of the rest of the property. And when the property owner makes money by building multifamily and retail and hotels and office buildings, that's when the city makes money as well. So all of that is part of kind of the complicated domino, but they're all very important facts for us to consider.
Other questions for our staff? All right. Well, thank you very much for the